Good evening. I would like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for Monday, February 24th, 2025. Before we again begin tonight's meeting, I would like to take a moment to recognize the passion, the passing of someone dedicated to our city, our city clerk, Dr. Stephen Kirkpatrick. As city clerk, Steve played a vital role in the workings of our local government. He advocated for fair and transparent elections, cared deeply about records preservation, advocated for the addition of professional staff in the clerk's office, and was the voice that swore in our new city officials, marking their beginning of service to our community. In Wheat Ridge, he was instrumental in helping the city navigate the challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic and the 2022 computer system outage. He carried out these responsibilities with professionalism, grace, and a deep respect for the traditions of our, of his office. But Steve's impact went far beyond City Hall. He was a scholar and a leader, earning his PhD in psychology from the University of Arizona and dedicating much of his life to education. He served as dean of the Graduate School of Organizational Leadership at the University of the Rockies, and later as vice president of publishing at that university. Through his firm, Kirkpatrick &amp; Associates, he spent years mentoring others and shaping the next generation of leaders. Steve passed away peacefully at home on Saturday, surrounded by his loved ones. He's survived by his wife Kathy, who has graciously shared that she welcomes the city's recognition of his contributions. In the days ahead, we will find meaningful ways to honor his legacy. For now, I ask would we take a moment of silence to remember Dr. Stephen Kirkpatrick, a man deeply committed to serving all of our community. Thank you. Thank you. Now you will please stand as you are able and join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Jenny Snell.
Present.
Dan Larson.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Janice Hoppe.
Present.
Corey Stites.
Present.
Adam.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Rachel Holtein.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any changes to be noted in the agenda? Hearing none, we will move with the agenda as presented, and we have one proclamation. We have a proclamation tonight recognizing Women's History Month and International Women's Day, March 2025, and March 8th, 2025. Whereas Women's History Month is declared annually as the month that highlights the contributions of women throughout history and in contemporary society, and March 8th has been recognized across the world as International Women's Day since 1911. And whereas, in March 1980, President Jimmy Carter issued the first presidential proclamation declaring Women's History Week to align with International Women's Day to commemorate the accomplishments, perspectives, and experience of women in the United States. And whereas, in November 1893, a Colorado referendum passed women's suffrage into law, making it the first state in the Union to give women the right to vote. And whereas, while the right to vote is a common topic of study when examining women's history, there are many more issues, perspectives, and accomplishments that require investigation across history, literature, science, politics, and the arts, to appreciate and understand the significant contributions of women throughout history. And whereas, the 2025 Women's History Month theme established by the National Women's History Alliance is titled "Moving Forward Together: Women Educating and Inspiring Generations", focuses on women in both the past and present who have influenced and inspired others by dedicating their lives to education, mentorship, and leadership. And whereas, women who are residents, business owners, employees, elected officials, volunteers, caregivers, and members of city staff, and make, and make a difference every day in the city of Wheat Ridge, and all, excuse me, and are to be celebrated for their contributions. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge City Council formally celebrate the month of March 2025 as Women's History Month, and March 8th, 2025 as International Women's Day in Wheat Ridge, Colorado, dated this 24th day of February 2025. Thank you. We now at our, pardon me, we are now at our public's right to speak. This is an opportunity for the public to come and speak to their city council for three minutes. When I call your name, if you would please come to the podium and introduce yourself, giving us your first name and your last name, and tell us whether you live or work in Wheat Ridge. And our first speaker tonight is Paige Piper, and Leo, Lisa Wilson is on deck.
Good evening, Mayor Starker and Wheat Ridge City Council. Paige Piper, Executive Director of Local Works. If you don't know, this upcoming month is a very big month for Local Works. Local Works will be celebrating 20 years since our inception. March 8th, actually, International Women's Day is the, is the date of our 20-year anniversary. And Clear Creek Maker Space will be celebrating one year of community impact at the end of March. And before I get into celebrations that I want to make sure that you all are aware of, to attend both city council and those in council chambers and listening online, I want to give a huge thank you for the incredible work that this 20 years has been. We know that we are standing on the shoulders of giants when it comes to the probably thousands of people at this point that has made Local Works possible and our work possible, and I feel so extremely grateful and just humbled every single day that I get to do what I do and give back to the community. When we think about the things that Local Works has done over 20 years, it's been quite a bit, both the things that you can measure and things that you can't. And when you look at Clear Creek Maker Space in a year of its inception, we've welcomed over 18,000 people through our front doors, and this month surpassed 200 members of the space. So you are invited to celebrate us, celebrate with us, not us, celebrate with us. We are celebrating all together in the work that we've done on Monday, March 31st. It's the fifth Monday, so you don't have a council meeting, so your calendar should be clear. At 5:30 PM at Clear Creek Maker Space, we have solicited the community to send in photos that show what Local Works has meant to them over 20 years. So there'll be a photo walk of community submissions of folks that have submitted. We'll have demos, we'll have a maker activity that you can, you can take away a little Clear Creek Maker Space branded item. So again, that's Monday, March 31st, and we would love to have city council join us. So thank you so much for, for both what you've done since I've been here, but also the 20 years that has made this organization incredible and this community incredible. So thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa Wilson, and she's our last speaker that we have in the city council chambers, but we do have a person joining us online, Linda Marshall. So Linda, you'll be on, you're on deck after Ms. Wilson.
I'm, again, Lisa Wilson, I'm a Wheat Ridge resident, and I wanted to start by giving kudos to your streets infrastructure staff, because after every snowfall, they are so good about plowing the bike path from wads to the park, and it is, it's so appreciated, and it's always delightful to look out there and see that it has been plowed. There is a section, however, it's a long 30-second, again, it's the bike path, and it's from Cody about, almost to Dudley, and it has a persistent drainage issue, and because of the retaining wall for the cemetery that's pretty high at that point, it receives minimal sunlight. So every snowfall and every snow melt, it ices over, and it's pretty persistent. And again, it's a long stretch, it covers the entire bike path, it's a long stretch. My husband's fallen there, I've had to penguin walk there, I've seen other people get out into the street there to go around it. I think last winter, there was somebody who fell, it was a serious enough fall that an ambulance did respond. So it's a recurring hazard, and it creates a safety concern for cyclists, pedestrians, runners like me, especially, obviously, during the winter months, but even on days like this, because there's no, the sun doesn't hit it, it's still icy. So I just wanted to bring your attention to it, and maybe there's something that you can do just to better the drainage there, because it's persistent. We've lived in our house for 20 years, and every winter, it's, you know, the penguin walk, so, you know, it would just, as, as I age, the, the fear of falling, you know, elevates, so just wanted to bring your attention to that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. Our next speaker is going to be Linda Marshall, joining us online.
Excuse me, Mayor, she has not signed in yet.
Okay, and we will, that's all of the speakers that I had signed in for public's right to speak. Councillors, there was one other, one other item here that I, that I went over in your, in your package. We have the study session notes for a hybrid meeting on February 3rd, 2023. Are there any changes or modifications to be noted in those study session notes? In hearing none, we will let those stand as submitted with our thanks to the clerk. With that, we will go to agenda item number one. This is our consent agenda. Councillor Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 1A, Resolution 12-2025, Resolution Amending the Fiscal Year 2025 Budget to Reflect the Approval of Supplemental Budget Appropriation for the Reappropriation and Reencumbrance of 2024 Fiscal Year Encumbered Funds in Amount of $5,164,449. At issue, there are 67 open purchase orders from 2024 budget that will be carried over to the 2025 budget. Each purchase order is associated with a specific project that was not fully completed in the 2024 fiscal year. The funds which were encumbered for these purchases orders were transferred to the unreserved fund balance of the relevant fund when the purchase orders were closed. To continue the closure of these projects in 2025, a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $5,164,449 is necessary to allow transfer of these funds into specific budget line items in the 2025 budget. Item number... 1B, Resolution 13-2025, Resolution Amending the Fiscal Year 2024 2J and 2E budgets in amount of $5,012,967, and approving the transfer of funds from the 2J Next Chapter Fund to the 2J Investing for Future, the Future Bond Fund to complete the feasance of the 2017 bonds. At issue in discussions with council prior to the 2J bond issuance, it was agreed that 7.4 million of the 12.6 million 2E fund balance would be used to pay down the 2017 bonds. At that time, the remaining debt, debit service of the 2017 bonds was approximately 12.4 million. The additional 5 million needed to completely pay off the 2017 bonds was included in the 38.7 million 2J bond issuance proceeds. City staff believe the 5 million payoff would be made through ESCO rather than an expense to the city, rather the 5 million is included in the total amount of the 2J bond issuing proceeds that the city received, and the payoff is considered a 2E expense. Therefore, in order to be fully transparent with the community and to comply with the city's budgetary procedures, a supplemental appropriation and transfer of funds is necessary.
Thank you. This is our consent agenda. Councillor Ohm, may I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item 1A and 1B?
Same.
We have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
And we may have a couple of councillors joining us online. Have you, were you able to tally their votes also?
They both gave a thumbs up.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's see, with that, we will go to Agenda Item Number 2. Councillor Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 14-2025, A Resolution Approving a Service Plan and Intergovernmental Agreement for the Legacy Metropolitan Districts Number 1 through 12.
We're gonna have a presentation on this, so we could kind of dispense with that. This will be a resolution of the council, it is not quasi-dudicial, it is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Mr. Goff, do we have a presentation on this item?
We do, thank you. So as was discussed at the February 10th study session, Intermountain Health has submitted a service plan to the city for the formation of a metropolitan district for the Lutheran Legacy Campus. Metropolitan districts in Colorado are a common tool for financing the public infrastructure portion of development projects. Close to 100 million in public improvements have been identified for the redevelopment of the Lutheran Legacy Campus. Boundaries of the proposed district include only those properties within the 100-acre Lutheran Legacy Campus. No properties outside those boundaries will be included in this district or taxed by the district. We still have a little bit of confusion from that. We've received a few letters asking us to opt their property out, but again, the only properties that will be included in the district are within the boundaries of the 100-acre Lutheran campus, and no other properties outside that will be included or taxed. Per state statute, service plans for the formation of a metropolitan district must be approved by city council. So this evening, Megan Murphy is here. She's with the law firm representing Intermountain Health and is here tonight to present the service plan to city council.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Megan Murphy, White Bear, Inkley, Tanaka, and Waldron, here on behalf of Intermountain Health. This is a substantially similar presentation to what you saw in the study session, so I'll move pretty quickly, and then there has been an update based on your requests for additional disclosures that you'll see in red line. So to start with, as Mr. Goff said, this is Intermountain Health's request for metropolitan districts to serve the former legacy Lutheran campus. Here's a boundary map, as you'll see, it includes no properties outside of those 100 acres, so no one is going to be taxed that isn't represented. We have 100% property owner consent. We're proposing 12 districts, six are the larger parcels, and then 1 through 12 are smaller parcels between districts 3 and 4. We'll be using those to adjust the boundaries as phasing and development for the site becomes clearer over time as the applicant goes through other development approvals with the city. We talked about these director districts last time, they're small areas of land that are initially set aside and become larger metropolitan districts over time, like you'll see in this example map here from a community in Aurora that has 20 director districts for approximately 800 acres. Some of the key financial terms for the service plan, the maximum debt issuance is 110 million against a cost of 99 million and change. The maximum debt mill levy is 67 mils adjusted from January 1st. This matches Ridge at Ward Station and Hans Ranch, two recently approved metropolitan districts in the city. And I want to stop and make a really important note here that there is a maximum debt mill levy imposition term, which is 40 years after the first imposition of a debt mill levy. That means this project cannot become like a project you might have heard about in the news recently, because it does have a hard discharge date. We talked a little bit about special improvement districts at the study session, this is an alternative to revenue or general obligation debt financing structures. Again, a special improvement assessment cannot be imposed on an end user, that's folks like you and me that would buy a home. This is only between land developers and big builders, so no one buying a home can be imposed a special assessment. We talked about disclosure of districts to future residents, we talked about the obligations under Title 38, we talked about the things we do annually, and then you came and said, what if we could do a little bit more? So I got together with Mr. Goff and Mr. Dahl and proposed a little bit more. I know it's not great visually here, but basically what it's saying, it matches the requirements in the city of Thornton and the city of Aurora, that requires the acknowledgement of the districts to be in, before the time they enter into the purchase and sale contract for the home. So it's actually going to be a piece of paper they sign when they're signing the purchase and sale contract, saying I understand this property is in a special district, this is the power the districts have. And then we're also going to display this at the sales offices and inspect quarterly to ensure it remains displayed at the sales office, so that could be a trailer, could be a model home, anything like that. There'll be a prominent notice saying this property is in a metro district, please ask for more information, here's where you can find that information. So I wanted to stop there and get your feedbacks on this section.
Actually, before we go to questions from council, I'd like for you to finish your presentation, and then we're gonna go to the public first.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the city council findings regarding the service plan is sufficient existing and projected need for organized service, no one else willing to provide that service, the district can provide the service, and the district has the ability to discharge a debt on a reasonable basis. As we saw in the service plan, the kind of table of key financial terms, there is a max debt limit, there is a max mill levy, and there is a discharge term. So within that box, the market will decide what's possible, and that's going to be based on home values at the time the homes are constructed and sold, which isn't projected to be for a couple of years. Happy to answer questions, that's the end of my presentation.
Okay. And Mr. Goff, is that all of the staff presentation?
That is, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before I go to questions of council, I'd like to invite the public to speak. I have one member of the public that has signed up to speak on this, Elise Brown. If you're here, would you please come to the podium and give us your first name, please spell your last name and an address, and then you'll be able to address the council.
My name is Elise Brown. B as in boy, R, O U, G H A M as in Mary. I live at 3545 Allison Court. I'm requesting the city council vote against the formation of the metro district on the former Lutheran hospital property for the following reasons. Number one, why would you add another level of government in a city which you don't control? Number two, there have been numerous problems with metro districts documented in the papers concerning the residents who are trapped in these forever taxed districts. Number three, metro districts are a money pot for the developers, who form them and the revenue continues after development is completed, with set property mill levy that may be increased quote as necessary according to state law. Number four, the worst problem in this metro district is that future residents residing in the district will pay a higher property tax than all the other residents of Wheat Ridge. This should be a reason to vote no, because of the unfairness, especially for the two council members of District 3. Number five, the proposed metro district includes the historic area of the chapel, Blue House and Tent House. At the numerous hearings the city held regarding the formation of a new master plan and working with future developers by the city manager, who were not owners of the property, the citizens consistently said the historic area should be preserved with historic designation and preservation. So has the city requested this area to be removed from the metro district? The city manager has processed, professed saving these historic buildings as important to the city. So has this area been requested to be excluded? Again, vote no on the formation of this metro district.
Thank you. I don't have any other citizens signed up to speak on this, so I will now go to questions of council. Mayor Pro Tim Stites.
Just a simple question, since it was just brought up. Why would the city, or why would we vote, why would we want a metro district? Why would the city approve a metro district here? What's the...
Well, as I mentioned earlier, a metro district is a financing tool that will enable the developer to pay for a lot of the public improvements that are needed. As, as I mentioned, service plan lays out, summarizes about 100 million dollars worth of improvements that will need to be made for this property to redevelop. As, as Megan mentioned, there's nobody else in line to pay for those, and the city that cannot pay for those, does not have the budget for that, so that, that's the primary reason.
So this is actually saving the taxpayers of Wheat Ridge a little bit of money, because we're adding essentially streets and things like that that would need to be plowed?
Correctly, and the metro district will not only build and construct, but they'll also maintain it long-term, so none of the roads will be dedicated to the city, so they'll be maintained by the metro districts, so there won't be any long-term costs to the city as well.
Thank you. Councillor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to say thank you for the response to our request about the information and making sure that it's transparent. I appreciate the additional language that you redlined there. My question is that not only will it be posted on site, but will, you know, oftentimes when these communities are for sale, they have their own website, and so I just wanted to make sure that that information would also be on that, on that website for that property, and then ask Manager Goff if maybe that's something we would consider linking to on our city website.
Do you want me to stand here?
Yeah.
Yeah, by state law, all metropolitan districts have to have their own website, has to be linked with the division of local government. The city's certainly welcome to link it to their site, it's publicly available. State statute also has a list of documents we're required to have on our website at all times and updated regularly, so the districts will certainly be in compliance with all of those provisions in state law.
So if I, if I were to go to Mary Schmary's new houses at the Lutheran Legacy Campus sales website, would I be able to find that information?
Yes, that's our hope and our plan and our requirement, so we also put that in the PSAs between the land developer and the builders.
Great, thank you.
Before I ask, close the public hearing and ask for a motion, are there any more questions of council? And we're going to close the public hearing, and Mayor Pro Tim Stites, may I have a motion on Agenda Item Number 2?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 14-2025, A Resolution Approving a Service Plan and Intergovernmental Agreement for the Legacy Metropolitan Districts Number 1 through 12.
We have a motion and a second, but Councillor Ohm, is there discussion on the motion? We have a motion and a second, but Councilor Ohm, is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, and I can't tell whether we have any, our councillors online have anything to say, but I assume not.
Councilwoman Holtein has a question.
Oh, Councilor Holtein has a question? Okay, Councilor Holtein.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually had my hand up for the question period earlier. Because this, so if I'm understanding correctly, the roads and sidewalks would not be the cities, so the, so the metropolitan district would be maintaining that. I'm assuming the same rules and regulations would apply, though, for snow removal and maintenance of, of like the sidewalks specifically, but like how, if I didn't live in the neighborhood and I lived in an adjacent neighborhood and I was walking through the new Lutheran campus, would the same standards be held there for the private, private improvements?
Yes, thank you for that question. The districts are required to follow the city's standards as the minimum, but we might choose to do something even better. So for example, in some communities, they'll do mailboxes at one inch or some lower threshold than city code might require. That'll be determined at the time the districts are actually doing the operations and maintenance, and based on resident requests of those that live in the districts. So we can do better than city standards, but certainly not lower.
Great, thank you.
Okay, are there any further, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
With Councilmembers Holtein and Larson voting aye, all ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. With that, we will go to agenda item number three. Councilor Snell, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Council Bill 05-2025, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning disposition of lost, abandoned, and unclaimed property. At issue, the Colorado State Treasurer's Office has advised the city of a state statute governing unclaimed property. The statute referenced as is the Colorado Revised Uniform Unclaimed Property Act, CRS The act generally requires holders of unclaimed property, such as the city, to disperse unclaimed cash and cash instruments to the state treasurer. The city may exempt itself from the act, but only if it has adopted a local ordinance concerning unclaimed property which conflicts with the act. This ordinance revises code sections to comply with the act while persevering, preserving the city's authority to dispose of unclaimed property. The ordinance simplifies the code sections on disposition of unclaimed property generally and property held by the police department.
Thank you. This is going to be a motion of the council. It is not quasi judicial. It is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have some further information or presentation on this item?
Yeah, our city attorney may add a little bit more to this.
Okay, Mr. Dahl.
Thank you very much. As the statement of the issue described, there are only two things going on here to deal with the fact that the state treasurer takes all cash funds that are unclaimed unless the city acts to have an ordinance that preempts that diversion of funds to the state and keeps the money. But in so doing, it's important for the city to have an ordinance that mirrors the statute and exercises the preemption authority granted by the statute. And so this ordinance does that by saying the city must hold on to unclaimed cash for five years, but then once that five years has passed, the city can keep that money rather than turning it over to the state. In addition, while we were addressing that issue, we worked with the police department, the police department's procedures for disposition of bicycles and other personal property that is not cash are unnecessarily complex, and we have simplified that. We've worked with the police department and, as you'll see, really striking out a lot of unnecessary language, adding some, but tightening up that procedure considerably and reducing the hold time for money or other things after the required period has passed to 60 days rather than a longer period. So we took the opportunity to streamline our disposition of unclaimed property code sections while we were at it. I will tell you that just today I learned from the CML State House report that the legislature is running, or there is a bill in the legislature to eliminate that preemption provision and to make it clear, you know, make it such that all that money would defer, escheat is the phrase, to the state. Having said that, though, that's early days on that bill. I asked the General Counsel at CML today, so what is the prognosis? CML is opposing that particular aspect of the bill, and my opinion is that I think it's well that the city continue with having this ordinance on the books. I have a fair amount of confidence that the municipality will be able to prevail, at least on the narrow issue of should municipalities be able to retain the money that goes uncollected within their jurisdiction. And so if it's, if it happens, if the legislature passes that bill and we have to go back and do a minor amendment here, I think most of the work in this ordinance is still worthwhile in terms of tightening up the procedures for bicycles and the other kinds of things that are not at issue in the state statute. For that reason, I would still recommend approval.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dahl. I have, I have no members of the public signed up to speak on this, so I'll go to questions of council. The city, before I close the public hearing, any questions for Mr. Dahl? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Councilor Snell, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve, sorry, I just lost my place here. I move to approve ordinance, not the right one, Council Bill 05-2025, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning disposition of lost, abandoned, and unclaimed property.
Is there a second?
On second reading, order it published and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication as provided by the charter.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will clerk please poll the council?
With Councilmembers Holtein and Larson voting in favor, all ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. We will now go to agenda item number four. This, these are going to be motions of the council. They are not quasi judicial. This is motions to approve appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. At issue, as of March 2nd, 2025, the terms of 21 board, commission, and committee members in the City of Wheat Ridge will expire. Additionally, there are six existing vacancies to fill, which include seats on the Board of Adjustment, Parks and Recreation Commission, Community Partners Grant Program, and the IDEA Committee. These 27 positions in total will be filled or reappointed. And the first appointments are made by the mayor in accordance with the city charter.
Mr. Mayor?
And, yes.
The city attorney has a procedural item he would like to address first before he could go on.
Okay, Mr. Dahl.
And I'm sorry for interrupting, and this was just brought to my attention, otherwise I would have had a chance to address it earlier. And this comes up irregularly, of course, when we have appointments. The city charter requires that the mayor may not vote on any matter except to break a tie on the adoption or amendment of the budget. So that's voting. That's somewhat at odds with probably not through intention, but the fact that these things got drafted different times. The code section on appointment to boards and commissions, which I have in front of me, which says where this code provides for an at-large member or members of a board or commission, the appointment of such members shall be made by the mayor. So that's great. The mayor makes the appointments, but the, the charter also goes on to say that boards and board and commission members are, in fact, appointed or are approved by the council, and that's the charter. So I have a suggestion for just procedurally how this would go to be able to honor the charter, which says the council actually approves appointments because it has to, and, and the mayor can't actually vote, but nevertheless, the code, which says that the mayor appoints these at-large members. And you have in your packet the language for the various motions. And while it's probably only a distinction that a technocrat like me could like, I guess I would ask that for the mayor's script for these, the various appointments for the at-large, I think it would be appropriate to, for the mayor to, rather than to move, because when you're moving, that implies that you're, you know, when you make a motion, you get to vote on that motion. That's how it always works. So it's a little inconsistent since the mayor could, could move, but then wouldn't be able to vote because the charter says no. All in aid of that, in terms of making our record, I think probably the best way to make the record and be consistent with both the charter and the code is for the mayor to, I to, to say, I request the appointment of whoever it is to the Board of Adjustment. That request then can be memorialized by a council member saying, I make that motion. And then we've got a request by the mayor to appoint, which is the mayor's role and authority under the code, and the motion actually being made by a council member that will then later be able to actually vote on that motion as, as the mayor can't vote on motions. I'm sorry.
Don't, don't apologize.
Okay. If I'd had the chance to rework the script a little bit, so there's only, I think, a half a dozen here, and I guess it's really, I'm speaking mayor muscly on this.
Okay.
If in each one, instead of I move to appoint, if you could just say, I request the appointment of whoever that is.
Can we talk about this for a minute?
Sure, of course.
Good. Because as I understood it, the mayor's not allowed to vote. That's okay. It doesn't say that the mayor, the mayor appoints these. Doesn't need anybody else. It's the mayor that appoints these. Is that right?
The code says that, yes.
Then, then why don't I just appoint these people?
You, you could, except for the fact that the charter also says in Article 9, that the council approves all appointments to boards and commissions. I can find that, too. And the chart, you know, we have to respect the charter.
So the mayor doesn't just appoint these. There needs to be a sanction on the fact, on, on the part of the council?
Yes, that's the code. The mayor appoints, but under the charter, the, only the council can approve board and commission membership. Now, I will say this, there are, I think there's an authority and a couple of other bodies that are not boards and commissions, and those are, I think the urban authority, I think is one. Those are mayoral appointments without any other action, and that you have, you know, there you have the absolute authority to appoint. So if it's a board or commission, I think we have to honor the charter, which says council, council votes on those, on those appointments, because that's the charter. Or it's a non-boarder commission, then, you know, you have absolute authority. The code does say you appoint, but I can't, I have, I'm trying to square that with the kind of absolute requirements of the charter, is all I'm trying to do.
Looks like this needs to have a little more work to it, doesn't it? Maybe you could put that on your list of things to work on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand the disparity, and it's frustrating, and I get that.
Okay, well, let's go ahead then. A question from Councilor Hoppe.
Just a clarification. Realistically, the mayor is doing the appointment, it's just being ratified by city council.
That's right. And that's always been, that's always been the, the practice. I understand the mayor's question, which was, well, I have this power, and you absolutely do, but...
So could he just, could he just say, I appoint, instead of I request, request to appoint?
Certainly. And then as long as there's a, a motion, ratifying that appointment, I'm fine with that, too.
Okay. Well, I plead for a motion to appoint John...
You can merely say, I appoint, and someone can then move to ratify.
I want to plead for a motion to my council. I plead for a motion to appoint John Choisy to the alternate board, as an alternate to the Board of Adjustment, term to expire March 2nd, 2028, and Betty Jo Page to the, as an alternate to the Board of Adjustment, vacancy term expires March 2nd, 2027, and Amanda Birch to an at-large, sustainable Wheat Ridge term to expire March 2nd, 2028, and Lynn Carter as a member at large of the IDEA Committee, term to expire March 2nd, 2028, and Joseph Chisholm to an at-large IDEA appointment, term to expire March 2nd, 2028, and Edward Nepomucienno to an at-large position on the IDEA vacancy, to an at-large IDEA Committee vacancy, term to expire March 2nd, 2027, and Tara Greer to an at-large position on the IDEA Committee vacancy to expire March 2nd, 2026. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please poll the council?
With Councilmembers Holtein and Larson voting in favor, all ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, councillors, for indulging me in that pleading. Councilor Hoppe, would you please introduce the, make the motions on District 1?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Tom Zelenko to the District, District 1 Board of Adjustment, term to expire March 2nd, 2028, and Ryan Hester to District 1 Parks and Rec Commission, term to expire March 2nd, 2028, and Ralph Haben to the District 1 Parks and Recs Commission vacancy term to expire March 2nd, 2027. Cody Hedges to the District 1 Planning Commission, term to expire on March 2nd, 2028. Corinne Anderson to the District 1 Sustainable Wheat Ridge, term to expire on March 2nd, 2028. And Kelly Tracy to the District 1 Community Partners Grant Program, term to expire on March 2nd, 2028.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please poll the council?
With Councilmembers Holtein and Larson voting in favor, all ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm, would you please make motions for District 3, please?
Two.
District 2.
District 2, pardon.
I move to appoint Alastair Hubert to the District 2 Board of Adjustment, term to expire March 2nd, 2028, and Jason McCullough to the District 2 Building Code Advisory Board, term to expire March 2nd, 2028, and Daniel Grave to the District 2 Planning Commission, term to expire March 2nd, 2028, Julian Stern to the District 2 Renewal Wheat Ridge, term to expire, expire March 2nd, 2030, and Alex Finnegan to the District 2 Sustainable Wheat Ridge, term to expire March 2nd, 2028, and Alex Goldsmith to the District 2 Community Partners Grant Program, term to expire March 2nd, 2028.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Councilor Holtein. We have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Councilmembers Holtein and Larson voting in favor, all ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. Councilor Weaver, would you please introduce District 3 motions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Susan Wood to the District 3 Planning Commission, term to expire March 2nd, 2028, and Allison Vitello to the District 3 Community Partners Grant Program, term to expire March 2nd, 2027, and Amanda Fixon to the District 3 Community Partners Grant Program, term to expire March 2nd, 2028, and Cindy Chang to the District 3 IDEA Committee, term to expire March 2nd, 2027.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Stites. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Councilmembers Holtein and Larson voting in favor, all ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman, would you please make motions for District 4?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint John DeRozier to the District 4 Sustainable Wheat Ridge, term to expire March 2nd, 2028, and Charles Hood to the District 4 Community Partners Grant Program, term to expire March 2nd, 2028, and Raven Newberry to the District 4 Community Partners Grant Program vacancy, term to expire March 2nd, 2027.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Councilor Larson. Would you, would the clerk please poll the council?
With Councilmembers Holtein and Larson voting in favor, all ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you very much. That concludes item number four. We will go now to agenda item number five. Councilor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Motion approving a contract with Charles Abbott Associates Incorporated for building division services and authorizing subsequent payments. At issue, Charles Abbott Associates Incorporated has provided building division services for the City of Wheat Ridge since 2018 under a contract that ends March 2025. A competitive procurement process for building division services occurred in late 2024, resulting in this award.
Thank you. This will be a motion of the council. It is not quasi judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a further staff presentation on this item?
Just real brief, this item hasn't been in front of council for quite some time, so I asked Lauren to give you a little bit of an update.
Director Mikulak.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to share the story of how we came to rely on a full-service contract for our building division. This may be familiar to some of you, and I included some of that history in the memo. and I included some of that history in the memo. But in short, the city has really had a long history of relying on some sort of third party for our building division operations for several decades. We used to utilize contract with Dr. Cog, the Regional Council of Governments, and also in sort of private firms to supplement our inspection services. So usually electrical or elevator, or if we had a high inspection volume. We bid that on-call contract in 2017, and that's when we started working with Charles Abbott and Associates. And it was just a month or two after that that we had the devastating May 2017 hailstorm. And the on-call contract sort of proved its value at that time because they could increase our staffing immediately to serve the demand of the thousands of roofing permits that we issued and inspected. After we stabilized after that storm is when we had a series of study sessions with council in 2018. And it wasn't so much a result of the hailstorm. It was because we'd had a four- or five-year period when we were struggling to fill key positions in the building divisions, inspectors, and also our chief building official role. So some of you may recall that our former director, John Stone, was our chief building official for a couple of years when we couldn't find a qualified, long-term candidate. And so as a result of those discussions in 2018, we converted the Charles Abbott contract from on-call to full service. And it's been a really successful model for us. We've had a little bit of turnover in the Charles Abbott staff as you would have with any normal city staff position. But the value of the contract has been similarly to sort of ebb and flow our staffing services as needed. So like when the hospital was getting built, we had an immense number of inspectors in the city. When our plan review volumes increased with all the townhomes that got constructed over the last few years, they have a really deep bench for plan review and contractual deadlines for when the plan review turnaround happens. So it's been a really successful model. That initial contract term was renewed a couple times, so it was seven years in total. And then late last year, we did an RFP. We had three proposals. Our evaluation team, the bid tab summary, I think, is in your packet from our evaluation team. And the reason that the team picked Charles Abbott again is really because of their approach, their customer service philosophy, but most importantly, their approach of being embedded in City Hall. I think most of our customers, and even some city staff, don't recognize that they're not city staff. They office here in City Hall. They have city email addresses. They have city decals on the vehicles, attend staff meetings. And it's gone, it's gone really well. Most services in the metro area who provide similar functions are usually not in person. They're usually sort of as needed or over email. And given our high value on customer service, this approach has been the best one of the proposals that we received. The pricing model is similar to what we've been under for the last seven years, which is the percentage of our building permit and license fees. It's not, it doesn't touch the use tax. That fully comes to the city. And the contract that is before you tonight would be up to nine years with an auto renewal each, each year. So I'm here for any questions that you have on our experience so far or this specific contract award. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no members of the public signed up to speak at this time on this item. So we'll go to questions from council. Questions of council? Okay.
Mayor?
Oh, I have one. Thank you, thank you, Councilor Larson. It's hard for me to see you up there, but I hear you. And would you please go ahead?
Thank you, Mayor. And just a real quick question regarding the renewal of the contract. I understand, the bid and the returns from that were very clear, and it was obvious that this firm is well-qualified and very appropriate. I just, my question was, during the review process, was there any effort or attempt to maybe contact some developers or people that had pulled permits in the past to see how they feel about the service?
That's a great question. Not specifically as a part of this RFP, but I do make an effort to talk to a lot of our frequent flyers and the developers of some of our larger projects who have been giving positive feedback over the last number of years. For those individuals where we've had like a specific difficulty with a personality or an inspector, Charles Abbott has been quick to address those or sort of modify the staffing to better fit the needs of Wheat Ridge. So we have been getting feedback in an ongoing basis over the last number of years.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Or ask for motion? Hearing none, Councilor Dozeman, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve a contract with Charles Abbott Associates Incorporated for building division services and authorize subsequent payments.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protim. Thank you. We'll let Mr. Larson have that one, okay? Since he had to come all the way in online. So are there any questions on the motion? I mean, Mayor Protim Stites?
I just want to say, I've actually had people, neighbors and stuff that work in the electrical industry and contractors and some of our property owners stop me over the last couple of years and say how much easier it's been working with the city of Wheat Ridge since we've brought these guys on. So I think this is a great investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, would the clerk please poll the council?
Council members Holtine and Larson voting in favor, it's all ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes our action items. We'll now go to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quickly, you may have all seen, noticed that our teen night program has recently been canceled. We work in partnership with the Jeffco Communities That Care Program. We've been partnering for the last three years to have a monthly teen night at our Anderson Building. But the funding for this program is, comes from the federal government through a grant. And unfortunately, Jeffco Communities That Care are worried that they're not going to get reimbursed for the program. So unfortunately, we had to cancel February and March. But staff is working on many different solutions. One is to work with Apex Parks and Recreation, who has very nicely reached out and said that we could potentially partner with their program. We hope that the funding is not fully lost, but at this point, we're just, there's no guarantees that it's going to be reimbursed. And then also, real quickly, too, there was a caller signed up tonight to talk about the STACK apartments at 44th and Kipling. This kind of came at a little bit of surprise to us as well. It's been in the works for many years. It's been an approved project, I think, for at least the last year. So they'd put an announcement out that they're breaking ground. And I don't think they notified us about that. But there is information out there about this. This is part of a development from, on, Kipling from 44th on the east side all the way up to about I-70. The first phase is going to be about 250 unit, I believe, the luxury apartment building on the south end. And then on the northern end, they're planning for probably some pad retail sites. But there's been some information out there in the press on this development. But I don't know if Lauren's got anything to add to that.
Yeah, just briefly, it's been a long time coming. This project has been in entitlements for over 10 years. I was looking at the timeline this week. So the zone change was 10 years ago. We did a concept plan with a neighborhood meeting, a subdivision plot, and a site plan. So our budget revenues have been eagerly awaiting these permits to be issued. And with the master developer working on some of the infrastructure, that's why STACK was ready to make that announcement recently.
Glad to hear it. The, you know, the picture in the Denver Post showed the northwest corner. That perhaps, perhaps may have caused a little confusion.
Yep. It's the northeast corner.
Northeast corner. All right. Thank you so much. Mr. Goff, city attorneys' matters?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. We'll go to elected officials' matters. Let's start online with Councilor Holtine.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Sorry to not be there in person tonight. I just want to thank everyone who applies for and who gets appointed and then serves for our boards, commissions, and committees. Just that civic service is deeply appreciated, and we're better for that. So I always love Appointment Night because we get some familiar faces back and some fresh faces. And we really appreciate all that good work that happens between Mondays in those boards and commissions. So thank you, everyone, for that.
Thank you. Councilor Larson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I would like to, I guess, pile on to this announcement from the real estate developer, that that project, as was noted, has been on the books for a while. And it is, it is agreeable to see this thing moving forward. It sounds like it's going to be a very important part of a very important corner within the city. And the announcement from the company says some very nice things about Wheat Ridge, so I think we should be proud of that. But yeah, now looking forward to this. And it looks like they, the developer, is contemplating completing the project by this time next year. So look for a lot of things to happen at that corner.
Thank you. Let's go next to Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. This weekend, I got to attend a new business opening. Forty-Fourth and Wellness is the name of the business. It's at 6,900 West 44th. They are a massage and chiropractic business, but very, very, very good group of folks and just super inclusive and supportive. And so I'd just like to say a welcome to them and thank you for having me. Also, would like to echo Councilmember Holtine's thoughts on everyone that applied to our boards and commissions. That's a, that's a lot of time that those folks dedicate to our city, and they're very, very passionate. And we are very excited to have them. Really excited to have some new members on our new IDEA Committee. We're back to, back to full strength, or at full strength. And then just wanted to share on our, our loss of Steve Kirkpatrick. I was thinking about him today and the many conversations that we had about coffee. He was a coffee connoisseur, and I really enjoyed talking with him about coffee. He was, he had really dialed in exactly where he got his coffee from and how he had it roasted and brewed and everything. And I really enjoyed it. And I, one thing I'd like to just kind of share with everyone that I thought of when I was thinking about the loss of Steve is, you know, we never know when we're going to not ever get to talk to someone again. And so I think it's important to just remember that, you know, anytime you see someone, I was thinking, when was the last time I got to talk to Steve? And it was a while ago. And, you know, you never really know. And so always just keep that in mind. And of all the other difficult things that we're dealing with in life right now, I think that that's just something to kind of remember that never take anything for granted. So we'll miss him. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And I, too, wanted to offer my condolences to Steve Kirkpatrick's loved ones and especially to his wife, Kathy, who has served on boards and commissions in the city of Wheat Ridge. And I have had wonderful conversations with Steve, even though we didn't always agree and align on politics. Like, the conversations were always civil, respectful, and definitely robust. He had a brilliant mind, and I really appreciated him getting involved in being our city clerk, and he will be very missed. It was very sad to hear that news because he was texting me every once in a while, keeping me apprised of his progress. And he felt he was really battling the leukemia well. And so that was, that was a little hard this morning. And so just want to offer my condolences and my gratitude for all of the service that he's provided to the city of Wheat Ridge and beyond. Also, on a lighter note, a celebration of 25 years with the Wheat Ridge Rec Center. The Parks and Rec team put on a wonderful presentation on Friday that I braved the weather to get to, although by the time it was going on, I have to echo the, kudos to our Public Works team. And they're plowing because the roads in Wheat Ridge are always clear. And by the time I was going to the rec center, we're pretty much getting dry with that Colorado sun. So wonderful event and video on display of the 25 years with the rec center. I know my family and I really enjoy going and using the amenities that are offered there. So wonderful, wonderful space in our city. And just thank you to all of those that came before us that had the vision and also the tenacity to get that program and that initiative across the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Weaver?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, too, want to echo the, a big thank you to all the people that, in District Two, that are applying for all these different boards and positions. I know it takes a lot of time and an effort, you know, that really helps city council help make decisions. And I also want to give a big thank you. I had a, I saw a neighbor across the street of mine, that elderly person that sometimes I'm able to help her shovel snow. And before I got up in the morning, there was a neighbor kid that already went out there and did that for her. And I know who it was, but I think he wanted to remain anonymous. And a big thank you to him. And I was lucky to, I just wanted to say, too, that even though the 38th is closed across Wasworth, you know, to please support those businesses, I was able to go into the Little Brazil with my wife on Valentine's Day. And, you know, what amazing food that they have. And so please try to support those businesses as we, I don't know how much longer we have of that road closure, but we're getting there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hoppe?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to also send out my condolences to Steve's family. What, I'll share my favorite thing about Steve was that I saw him at several of the high school girls' sports games. So he would come to our softball games and to our basketball games and was a big cheerleader for our young ladies in sports. And I really appreciated that about him. And we had some, we had some really fun times and some fantastic conversations. So I know that his family is probably having a hard time with his loss right now. time with his loss right now, but we really appreciated the time that we, that you loaned him to us here at the city.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Stites.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And I'll, I'll echo that as well. I got to, Steve and I met kind of in an interesting way. I turned in my petition to run for council and all of a sudden a name popped up on the website right next to mine. It was Steve's. And he and I met and had coffee and realized we actually really liked each other quite a bit and didn't want to run against each other. So he actually ran for clerk. So he and I have knocked on a lot of doors together and been to a lot of parties and stuff. And Steve was always great. So much fun. So condolences to Kathy and his family, but really enjoyed having our time together with, with Clerk Kirkpatrick here, here on the dais as well. I was up really early on a Sunday morning about a week or so ago, flipping through the radio stations as I was driving. And I heard a voice that was really familiar and it was Paige Piper from Local Works. She was here tonight doing a radio interview about the Makerspace and about Wheat Ridge. And she, she did our city proud. So I just wanted to give her a shout out. It was on Cozy 101. It's the Mile High Magazine. I think it's on the website. So if you are interested in checking that out, it's a, it's a short podcast. It was only about 15 or 20 minutes, but she did a great job. And Makerspace, the, your ceremony coming up on the 31st is pretty exciting. I just blanked out on what else I was going to say. So I will just say, if you can find it, find it, buy it in Wheat Ridge, especially if you can find it and buy it on Wadsworth right now. We've got Pierogi Factory, all the restaurants there, especially on the, I'll say the District Three side, but all, all over there. Just get out and support. My family and I have found Twisted Smoothie recently, which has moved over off of Pierce. Fantastic. So try them out. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to, it was, it was really a pleasure for me last Friday to attend and be able to speak at the 25th anniversary of the Wheat Ridge Rec Center. This is really a marvelous facility. It's great to, it's great to be able to, to get in shape over there, but it's great to go and visit. And, and we do a lot of events there. This is really a public gathering space. And in, in that regard, the, the night before, on Thursday night, I was really pleased to attend the, the third or fourth city, city plan open house. And Director Miculak had all of her staff there. And, and really we had a lot of energy around the, around the community to come in and talk about the city plan and what we're doing. And we, we also had other, other organizations in the city. Sustainable Wheat Ridge was there and, and other, other plans that we're working on. I can't remember them all, but there, you know, it's a multi-purpose night when you get out to go there and, and be able to put your input into what's going on. And what really reminded me or really made, made me think that we've done, we're doing the right thing is that, is that to get the, the rec center built, you know, people came together with a great idea. They worked hard on it. They were able to gather community support for it. We were able to, to bring it to a financing option and we're able to get it built. And we've been able to maintain it for the last 25 years. And it's a marvelous facility. It's really up to date. It looks great. It's, it's really well regarded in the, in the metropolitan areas. One of the best rec centers around. So I really want to congratulate the, the folks that are involved in that, our Parks and Recreation people, but also the citizens. Everyone that goes there supports that. I want to congratulate all the folks and welcome them to our board and commissions. This is a great way to become involved in the city of Wheat Ridge. There's great ways to, to get great knowledge, but you're also able to provide your input and be able to help to shape and future of your city. I'm, I think I'm right in saying, Mr. Mr. Goff, that 38th and Wadsworth is now open?
It is open as of today.
And we, you know, we are, we are making good progress on that, on that highway. It's been a long time, but it's coming to a close. And I think we're really going to be happy when we get it done. And I want to end with, with saying that Steve Kirkpatrick was a really great guy. You know, he was, he was down to earth. He was intelligent. He had a great deal of integrity. He had a really sharp wit. He was fun to be around and we're going to miss him in this city. And I send my condolences. We will, are going to, that concludes our regular meeting. We are going to conclude with a special study session after this. So counselors, if there's no more business to come before us, we will stand adjourned and we will take just a couple of three minutes and then we'll be back for Okay. I'd like to call to order the special study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado on Monday, February 24th, 2025. We have one study session, one item on our study session is the Frutdale School Lofts. Mr. Goff, do you have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Thank you. Verbal presentation this evening, Mr. Mayor. I will start out and then we do have representative from Foothills Regional Housing here this evening that will help with presentation and staff as well. So to get started, after a very long history, as you saw in your packet, if you read the timeline, Frutdale School on West 44th Avenue was decommissioned as a school in 2007 by the Jeffco School District. This school was originally designed by noted Denver architect Temple Buell in 1927. And it's his oldest remaining school building. There was concerted effort by the community at that time and the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority to save this building from demolition due to its historic nature. The building was eventually included on the National Register of Historic Places and also the State Register of Historic Properties in 2013. After several years of negotiation, the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority, or I'm sorry, the Wheat Ridge, yeah, Wheat Ridge Housing Authority purchased the building in 2011 for $112,000. This was the amount that Jeffco Schools paid for the environmental remediation that they had conducted in preparation to demolish the building. The Wheat Ridge Housing Authority has spent an additional $110,000 to repair the roof and to weatherize the building. After several years of market studies, the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority determined they did not have the capacity to redevelop the building for housing purposes. So they published a request for interest to solicit reuse proposals from the development community. After several failed proposals, a redevelopment agreement and purchase and sale agreement with Hartman Eli Investments was approved in 2016 to renovate the building into 16 lofts, five of which would be affordable, deed restricted. And the other 11 were naturally occurring affordable units. Renovations were completed and the grand opening of the Frutdale Lofts was in October of 2017. The property is solar powered and has state of the art energy efficiency features to minimize operational costs as well as to provide community education on sustainable, sustainable development. The site also includes small fruit orchards and other low water use edible landscaping and free electric vehicles charging stations. To make this deal work, the city contributed 2.58, 2.585 million in loans and the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority contributed $570,000 in loans to make this project happen. HEI repaid the city, the 1.5 million of the city loan in 2018, leaving a balance of $1,085,000 owed to the city and $570,000 still owed to the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority. The repayment of the remaining loans is contingent on HEI earning a 20% cash on cash return on this project, which has not occurred to date. HEI approached the city late last year notifying as they were looking to sell the property. I introduced them to Foothills Regional Housing, who has offered to purchase the property under the following terms. Foothills Regional Housing would assume the remainder of a $1.5 million Freddie Mac loan. They would also contribute $100,000 cash to the purchase price. They would pay HEI $515,000 to cover deferred development and asset management fees. And they've agreed to increase the affordability of the existing units by adding project based vouchers over time. The other, the terms for the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority would be for them to forgive the $570,000 in loans. And the city's contribution would be to contribute a minimum of 1.5 million of the naturally occurring affordable housing fund grant we received from Congress. And the city would receive back the 1.85 million in its remaining loan balance. So that's a real high level summary of where we're at. But before we go into any further discussion or recommendations, I would like to turn it over to Dana from Foothills Regional Housing, who's been working very closely with us and HEI on a proposed purchase of this property. Dana is the Chief Real Estate and Development Officer with Foothills Regional Housing and a user of our rec center.
And a user of the rec center as well. Thank you. So again, I'm Dana Ashley Ollm. I'm with Foothills Regional Housing. And just wanted to say, Foothills Regional Housing has tried to have this balanced approach to our portfolio. So we have over 1,000 units in the community, both new construction that we have built and also just trying to keep existing housing affordable. So we've purchased things up and down Jefferson County to try to maintain their affordability. And typically when we look at these projects, they need a lot of work. And so we're looking at additional investment beyond just assuming the property. But in this particular case, because Frutdale School came online in 2017, we're in a really good position where we can keep all the tenants in place, where over time, with project based vouchers and other assets we have, we can ensure that affordability for those additional 11 units. And we really think it's a great opportunity for us and the community. We know how much investment that the city of Wheat Ridge has made in this project. And we just want to continue that legacy. But I know everybody involved is wanting to do it, both from protecting the physical form of this building that means something to the community, but also protecting that which is so hard to come by in our community, which is affordable housing. So, you know, it's kind of this complicated financial scenario because we had to look at it as who can bring what to the table. And I think what Foothills Regional Housing brings is the ability to manage this at scale. So 16 units is super tough to manage. And one of the reasons that Frutdale didn't survive is because insurance rates are going up so high. So, you know, they watch their expenses just creeping up over time. Well, because we're a housing authority and we have access to pretty good insurance models, you know, we know we can have savings on that. And because it's 16 units and we have other units in the community, we know that property management and property maintenance don't have to, you know, just devote their time to 16 units, right? They can devote it to 16 units within a very large portfolio. So we see it as a win-win, keeping the affordability, keeping this community asset. Wheat Ridge has always been such a great partner to us. Ives Campus, Ives One, Ives Two, which is in for tax credit. So we just see it as a way to formalize our partnership and our commitment to affordable housing in the community. And I'm happy to answer any other questions, but that's sort of how we see it.
Thank you. Before I go to questions from council, I'd like to note that this would be when we invite the public to speak. No members of the public have, have signed up to speak. So we'll go to questions from council. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I, as I, okay, so as I see it, we would be looking to pull the money out of our fund, our affordable housing fund that we were going to utilize to try to encourage and maintain the naturally occurring affordable housing that we have in our community, which is, is still kind of on the starting blocks at this point. We don't necessarily have partners in our community on that just yet. Is that true?
Yeah. Lauren, you want to speak to it? And she might have it.
Yes, that's correct. So we have an idea of a program. We have a grant narrative in with HUD, but we don't have a lineup of other potential partners. When we last talked to council about what that NOAA program could look like, we had acknowledged that to be more likely that we'd need to work with some of the bigger players like a Foothills as compared to sort of smaller individual property owners.
And, and we're on a little bit of a, a time clock just because the majority of our budget in that, for that project is a federal grant. And we are looking to be able to have something to really jump off the starting block with so that we're more likely to get those funds?
Yeah, that's honestly one of our biggest concerns right now is the uncertainty about federal funding. And we've been told by many different folks at the federal level and others that if you have funding and it's been awarded, spend it as quickly as possible before something else happens. And that's why we have three doors in here, believe it or not. We learned very well as Laura and I were drafting this memo. It's like, how do we start this? Well, let's, let's start with three doors. And so we can get into our recommendations, but we do have three different recommendations. And that's, as Dana mentioned, there's, it's, the timing is kind of interesting. This is kind of a win-win. I think we, I would have preferred not to put 2 million maybe into one project, but because of the uncertainty of what's going on right now, we believe it's the best thing to do. And, and we can talk about this more. It actually frees up potential other funding for other projects that maybe Dana could speak to.
And I just have one last question. I wanted to clarify, in that fund, the, the federal dollars that, that we were granted are not the only dollars in that fund, though. We have, we have a project with the American Motel that's going to be putting some funds into it. We have not this budget, but next budget, we have the short-term rental tax that'll be going into it. So while it is the majority of what we have now, it's not the only thing that we have. Is that right?
Correct. And just keep, remember that the 2 million we're getting from Congress was to, to respect the original intent. It was supposed to be specifically for retaining current affordable units in your community. And this would do that. The other funding in our housing fund can be used for multiple use, other uses for affordable projects, which we're working on right now, you know, such as, you know, maybe first time homebuyer grants, different things like that. And we'll be coming to you in the future with those ideas.
Okay, I lied. I do have one more question. The Wheat Ridge Housing Authority has, they have not been very act, they have not been active. We were looking at potentially doing some sort of redesign of that committee once we kind of got more of a plan going. So, but my question is, I mean, they do have to meet once a year. It's, it's statutory that they have to do that. And so, so my question is, have they been put on notice that this is something that we're looking at?
Yes, they have been put on notice. We have a meeting scheduled coming up here in just a couple of weeks. And I have a message with additional detail that'll go out to them based on tonight's discussion to sort of have no surprises when we go into that March meeting.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I have several questions and more to just kind of fully understand. So what is the purchase price?
Do you want to speak to that?
Sure. So the purchase price overall is 3.4 million. So that contemplates the repayment of the city loans. So the, this kind of uses that $2 million in NOAA funds to make sure that the city's existing loans get repaid. So that you can use that money to then incent future housing efforts that you want to make. So it's, I don't want to say inflated, but it contemplates all of the existing debt on the property and contemplates what it's really going to take to run it in the future. So.
So in essence, we gave 2.1 million of a loan and then the $570,000 in addition to that from the Wheat Ridge Historical Society.
to that from the Wheat Ridge Historical Society. And now we are paying one and a half million dollars of a grant that we've received to, towards the purchase price and basically to just, I don't know, capture, I capture $1 million or, so what, what, how much of the loan has been paid off to, to date?
1.5 million of the 2.585 has been paid off. We received that within two years of the development of the project. So we have an outstanding loan balance of, for the city of just over a million dollars.
And that would fully be paid back? So the loan would fully be?
On the city's portion, yes.
Yes, but after the city invests one and a half million?
Yeah. But keep in mind that the, the 2 million from Congress, it can only be used for one purpose.
Right. Naturally occurring.
Yeah. Um, and the, the million that we get back would come back to our general fund.
General fund.
Can be used, yeah.
Okay. Um, so what, what is the issue? Like, what was the impetus of, of being underwater and, and having to sell? Like, do you have kind of any details?
Yeah, I can give a little bit more detail. I think Jim is fine. Um, I was speaking to Dana, um, uh, mentioned it briefly about the insurance rates. So that, um, they did have a major, um, insurance claim, um, from flooding, um, from a tenant, unfortunately. And, um, their, their insurance company dropped them after that one claim. It was a pretty big claim. And I think they were paying about 20, 24,000 insurance at that time. They went back out to the market to get like insurance. It went up to $80,000 for us. Again, as for a very small project as this, it's hard to tell that. And they, they realized that, again, um, the city's reimbursements are based on that project being financially, uh, is sustainable and reaching a 20% cash-on-cash return for the developer, and they don't see that ever happening at this point. If we did not, if we did not participate in some type of purchase and sale agreements and they maintain the building as is, um, we likely would not see that million dollars back.
Okay. Uh, and so moving forward, if we're talking about there's five affordable units and 16 of them will be offered, uh, unaffordable, what are we talking about when we're using that terminology? Is it going to be the 80% AMI or below as existing? Or how does Foothills plan to kind of shift that?
So we looked at all the tenant incomes who were in there. And so it's very low income tenants already. Um, but in terms of what we would agree to, it'd be the 80% AMI in contract. And what we'd like to do, because we have access to housing vouchers and other tools, is just make sure that we maintain the existing tenants as long as they want to be there. Now, if a new tenant comes in and, you know, their incomes are 60% of AMI, they would also be eligible. But what you're getting, I think, is the consistency of the affordability, right? If Jim had to sell this on the open market, it would be encumbered by the fact that there's already five units that are supposed to be affordable. And then how do you, you know, have the rest of them cover the costs of this increased insurance and other operating costs? So it's, it's stabilizing it. I think because, um, you know, the housing authority works in this community too, it's kind of keeping those dollars in the community no matter what happens. So you guys are going to give the 2 million to us. We're going to repay the loans, but you know that whatever we do also gets reinvested. And I just want to point out an example of that is with the Ives Two application, which is 98 units of affordable housing. Um, we're putting in 2 million of our own money. So it just gets recycled into new developments. These things are expensive and they require cash, but by having us be the recipient of it, I think you kind of guarantee yourself that it's going to be an investment in, within the community. And if not for Ives, for Ridge Road or something like that. So, you know, it, it's not the most ideal situation. We wish Jim wasn't in this situation and that he was operating it because it was really of labor of love for him. But, um, this is probably the best solution if you care about this building and the affordability.
And you kind of touched on just my last question in regards to the Ives Two and if that is still, you know, on their timeline and, and moving forward and like this is not going to prevent any way, shape or form that, that project, Foothills Regional Housing?
No, it won't. In fact, this will probably help it because, um, it's another way we can show that Wheat Ridge is very supportive of affordable housing. So that becomes a big marketing piece for us. And as Mayor Starker knows, he presented at our last, um, sponsor presentation for CHAFA. Now, we did get denied twice, but we're thinking third time's a charm and we did increase the density in terms of providing more units. So we really feel that we've, um, been good than the signals that now's our time. Um, and so it won't affect that. It just will add to that narrative that this is a community that very much cares about affordable housing, that very much sees the investment of their resources in affordable housing as valuable. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Hulteen, did I see your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I have, uh, as Patrick knows, I've got a lot of concerns about the reinforce, the reimbursement of federal funds. What's our risk moving forward, uh, using these funds to then find out that, um, the NOAA funds are actually not going to be granted or reimbursable?
Yeah, I, I believe this, the whole deal will be contingent on those funds being reimbursed. And maybe Lauren can speak to this a little bit, but our new housing, um, manager, Shannon, has been, um, speaking with HUD kind of on a regular basis about the process to receive these funds. They are, it's, it is a reimbursable grant, but I know they've talked about as detailed as, um, uh, setting up a wire transfer, um, when this property closes so that those funds could be transferred almost immediately. But maybe Lauren, who wants to do that?
Yeah, as soon as, um, this proposal came up, it's helped actually create a significantly more, um, productive conversation with HUD because our prior grant narrative was pretty vague in terms of what we wanted the NOAA program to look like. And so, um, Shannon Terrell, who you'll get to meet next month, who's our, our new housing planner, um, has contacted our HUD representative, explained this sort of specific, uh, proposal. Um, and they're poised to receive that modified grant narrative that reflects this proposal and, and work with us to make it a, a smooth, um, process. Obviously that, that person can't make any guarantees, um, but they've been very helpful to date. And with our housing position filled, we think we have all the people at the table that could help, um, pull this off.
Thanks for the additional information. Um, you know, one of the executive orders last week was really directing new, um, a lot of the new grant requests actually go through, um, an executive office now. And so if you haven't already in your discussions with HUD, it would be good to clarify what the approval process looks like for this. I'm not sure how congressionally directed spending or HUD grants like hit this, but I know in the transportation world, it's upended a lot of stuff. So, um, as you're working on that, that's a pretty specific clarifying question that would be good, um, be good to figure out. And other than that, I mean, it's a less than ideal situation. Um, you know, I appreciate that Councilmember Hoppe has pointed out that we, you know, through other partnerships and our policy on capturing short-term rental tax revenue to go towards affordable housing, um, you know, as long as I've been on council, our housing authority has not been functioning because the funds have been tied up in this project. And so, um, I, I want to register much to Councilmember Hoppe's point that, that this is also a good signal for us to really re-engage our housing authority. Um, because we've, we've just been, we've had a lot of eggs in this basket and we now will have different eggs in this basket. And I just want to make sure that we're, we're continuing to be diversified and engaged in working with our housing, our own housing authority on how to, how to spend those funds. So thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other, any further questions at this time for council? Mr. Goff, then would you, do you want to, uh, walk through some of your recommendations or your options that you've got here?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, as I mentioned, we have, we have three doors. First one is to do nothing. The property, we believe, would either remain as is under current ownership. Um, and I believe the repayment of the city and housing authority loan, loans would be unlikely. Or the property could be sold on the private market. In that case, um, the rents would likely be increased to market rate, um, potentially. Second option is to, uh, recommend to the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority that they forgive the $570,000 in loans and include those as a contribution to this project. And the city contributes, um, 1.5 of the NOAA funding. As we mentioned, as you all know, that we received 2 million to preserve affordable units in Wheat Ridge. And what we recommend is that, um, we ask the housing authority to forgive the 570,000 in, in long-term loans and the city contribute the full 2 million, um, in the NOAA funding for this project for numerous reasons. We mentioned earlier, um, the, the uncertainty of the loans. We've looked at, um, if we just gave 1.5 and how we would try to spend another half a million, it gets a little complicated. There's many rules and regulations from HUD for, um, other requirements, environmental assessments. Again, we believe it's best just to put it towards this. Um, and it would, um, free up some additional funding for Wheat, uh, Foothills Regional Housing. They had, before this project, this issue came to us, they actually requested, um, $500,000 for Five, for Ives Two. They would not need that. If we give the full 2 million for this project, they would not need the 500,000 for Ives Two. Um, there, there's also another, uh, potential, um, project in, in Wheat Ridge, a building they own that needs some electrical upgrades that I think this potentially could help them do that and keep that building affordable as well. Um, I think they were even contemplating maybe selling that building at one point because it's, it's, it's not making money, it's barely making money for them as well. And they weren't sure if they wanted to put, uh, a couple hundred thousand in to upgrade the electrical. If they have to upgrade the electrical, otherwise they're going to lose their insurance. So, um, giving the full 2 million will free up funding in Foothills Bank that they can, um, help with other projects. So we do recommend, um, option number three.
Okay. Further discussion or questions? Councilor Hulteen, thank you.
Thank you. Um, if we go with option number three, I mean, I don't understand all the mechanics of these different funding mechanisms, but, um, would that be able to go, like, would that allow us to not have to fully forgive the WR, the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority loan? Like, is there a math there that works?
No, that, every option would require a forgiveness of the housing authority loans.
Okay.
The city would receive its full million, $85,000 back, however, um, in option two and three.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Do we have further discussion? Do we have, um, consensus then to, um, move to option number three? It's like we have consensus to move on option number three.
Thank you so much.
Dana, thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate you being here tonight. Mr. Goff, is there anything further to come for us?
Nothing from staff.
Study session?
Thank you.
Then, uh, we will be back here. Let's see, I got to get my calendar. When are we back here? It's the 31st, so we're not here next two weeks because?
Yep. We're here next week.
Are we?
March, March 3rd study session, yes.
Okay, so we'll be back here next week.
Then off March 3rd.
March 3rd on a study session, then we're off a week. Okay. So we will, uh, stand adjourned. Hopefully everyone makes it home safely.